Okay, let's go ahead and proceed with our regular council meeting. If you can please call the roll.
Mayor Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky.
Here.
Councilmember Al Britton.
Present.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Kaczynski.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Great, if you'll please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to just take a moment before we get into our regular agenda here to have a moment of silence for Vince Faletta, an individual who was, had been involved in our town long before we were a town, responsible for, he served on the Central Broward Drainage District Board for a number of years, probably, single-handedly, had more impact on the drainage on the east side of town than any other individual around. And he was always a guardian of our town, always looking out for what's best of our town, and always held the council accountable, that's for sure. So, he has passed in the last week, and I just wanted to take a moment of silence. If you please join me. Great, thank you very much.
Can I just add a comment?
Sure, sure.
So, we kind of all learned about Vince's departing at about the same time, and I started to think about it, and you're right. I mean, this is, he was Mr. Drainage.
He really was.
I asked Andy to investigate, looking at whether we can name one of the canals over in Sunshine Ranches after, and work with Central Broward, or whatever it takes. Because, I mean, to me, that's fitting for Vince.
Yeah.
He would appreciate that if he was still around.
Right.
He'd tell us we need to clean it and drain it.
(laughing) Excellent.
But, you know, I think that was a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, great idea. Okay, do we have any public comment this evening?
None.
Okay. Okay, if you can, go ahead and speak, Mary Ann, and then when you get done speaking, if you can please fill out one of the forms.
Mayor, we have one public comment tonight, Mary Ann Allen.
Excellent, excellent, thank you Keith.
Surprise, surprise. If you'll indulge me for a few minutes, I want to give you a 40-year overview of this town and this area. I came to this area in 1980, and I want to tell you what Flamingo Road used to look like. It was barely two lanes, and if you went towards State Road 84, it dropped off sheer on either side, and it was all loaded with orange groves. We used to have to take our time behind the big orange carts, because they'd go five miles an hour with the tractor. But the smell of orange blossoms used to fill the air whenever you drove by, I used to rail down my windows just to smell those orange blossoms. Now, from Johnson Street onward, south, it was sheer forest. There was no development, there was no Pines Boulevard with development, it was all forestation. In fact, I even saw Panthers at the time, 40 years ago. When I came and bought our property here in Sunshine Ranches, it was the greatest honor of my life. I had dreamt about being able to afford to buy even a little place here, and it was a dream that was realized, but I always felt like such a newbie at the time, and now to be considered one of the old timers, it's, the time goes faster than you think. So what I saw in all these 40 years is rampant overdevelopment, and one of the worst offenders, I think, was Pembroke Pines, because it's concrete from as far up to the beach, all the way to US 27. It's completely built out with high, high-impact buildings, you know, three, four stories. They can't even contain the transportation needs over there, it's always a lot of traffic. So with overdevelopment, what happens? Well, I sat here and I listened to the garbage people saying, "We're running out of room to put our garbage. Where are we going to put all this garbage?" And yet, more people come in, more people. The other thing is the drain on our aquifers and our water tables, which isn't well-understood. I can tell you from following what's going around the world, the water is disappearing around the world. The Danube is disappearing, the Thames River is down. And you know what England did? They did a study, why are they losing all their groundwater? Because they developed their wetlands. This is so important to preserve our wetlands. Did you know that trees will, the leaves of a tree will absorb 10% of rainfall, which helps for flooding? Cut down all the trees, put in roads, put in houses, put in driveways, that doesn't percolate the rainwater. So the last few years, I've noticed, when we do have floods, they're worse than we've ever had, and that's because we've developed so much of our area. And I have to commend this town, that you put the brakes on overdevelopment a year ago, when you put a moratorium on plating. That was a brilliant idea to say, "Okay, we've had too much, let's digest what's going on here." Just this week, Pembroke Pines is developing the last tract of undeveloped land.
Saw that.
And it's a nightmare, because it's ruining wetland. I don't even know if they have permits for that, for the DEP and for wetland mitigation. We're checking into that, by the way. So, it's really important to realize the water's disappearing around the world. What happens when the aquifer takes decades to replenish? It doesn't replenish yearly, and especially with low rainfall, it doesn't replenish. We're not an official drought here in South Florida this year, and you know the dangers that happens with droughts. So what happens when the aquifers get depleted and your groundwater drops? Saltwater comes in, we have saltwater intrusion. Now you can't water it for your grass, now the tree roots, which go down into the ground, they get poisoned, the trees are going to die. So this is, we are at a point in climate change where it is catastrophic, and we're kind of insulated here somewhat, but if we don't take the long-term view of how can we address driveways, can we make them percolate? Can we change our zoning to make it a little more green so that we don't have the impacts that they're having out west with droughts, where they're shipping in water? There's no more water in parts of California, they have to ship it in and pay for it. So we've been spoiled with water, but it's not guaranteed. In 84, we had a drought, and we were told to mitigate our water, we were only allowed to water certain days of the week. So zero escaping our swales with wildflower and plants that can nourish our bee populations, our insect populations. Did you know that 80% of the insects around the world are gone, they're extinct? And when the insects go, we go. When the trees go, we go. So encouraging, and some of the towns are doing this, they're paying their residents to zero scape their swales, we don't have to water and cut our swales if we zero scape. So I'd like to work with the town, and maybe we could get a committee on how to green the town a little more, give them rewards for planting more trees, or fruit trees, anything that can benefit the environment. We need to help now before it's too late. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Okay, closed public comments. Any board reports this evening? Seeing none. Councilmember comments?
I'll go.
Great, thank you.
I'll be very quick. Okay, these are just some items that are coming up. This month, we have the Flo-Mobile here at, on 9/21, from 10:00 to 12:00, see Deborah in the clerk's office for an appointment. A big deal coming up on the 20th, the Stormwater Master Plan Workshop is going to be here. We have our final budget on 9/22 at 6:00 PM, and moving into October, we have the Broward County Property Appraiser on the 4th of October, from 10:00 to 12:00, and the Flo-Mobile again, on the 26th of October, from 12:00 to 2:00, by appointment only. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Gary. Any other council comments? Jim?
Steve, I'll be brief. We had our probably fifth or sixth meeting with the Civic Association that we're trying to restart, and I do want to say that we had 30 people attend, and I thank the council for attending also, and we are going to put it together and get the paperwork soon, and we'll be joining the rest of the association. Thank you.
Awesome, awesome, great work. David?
I have nothing.
You're good, all right. Bob?
Talked out.
All right, awesome. Okay, I just wanted to mention a couple of things. So on Wednesday evening, we will be having the mayor's call again, starting back up for the fall, so look forward to that. If you need any information on the Zoom, it's a Zoom link, so you can, that's on the website, Town Southwest Ranches website, so you can get that there. The farmer's market starts up on Saturday, September 24, so it's right around the corner, just a couple of weeks away. Look forward to that, really am looking forward to seeing everybody out there, that is awesome last year, so, or last spring, so looking forward to doing that again. Just a quick, quick note, we bring this up, I know, Bob, you do a fantastic job of bringing this up on a regular basis, I just want to add my voice to it, please lock your cars, please, please take the fobs, put them in your house. We just, it's just, the more that happens, the more the word gets out there, the more it encourages others of like minds to come up here and test the waters. So you're not only doing yourself a favor, but you're doing the rest of the town a favor by doing that, so please ask you to do that. And then, I think, actually, I think I'll stop there, we're good. It's been a long day, I don't need to get into that, we'll pick another, we'll pick another evening to go into other topics, because it's been longer already. All right, so, legal comments?
None.
All right, excellent. Any administrative comments?
None, other than I want to thank you all for, for your efforts on behalf of the town and the residents through the budget process. Emile and the finance team have done an outstanding job, the department directors have stepped up, it's, you know, as I've said before, government is the ultimate team sport, and I think that was representative tonight, so I just want to thank you all for your efforts, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Andy.
Yeah, sure.
Andy, just a quick question, I don't mean to ask you this cold, but have we made any progress on the licensed wake readers for around town?
Yeah, Russell has had, I think he's, every other week, he's doing Zoom calls with our consultants and with FPNL. We had an issue with FPNL, we got the check cut, the mayor signed the emergency check, FPNL's picked that up, our vendor has picked up from FPNL what they need. My guess is the vast majority of them will be done within the next 30 days.
Excellent.
Not all, but the majority.
Sure.
Then we have two that we have an outstanding issue, locations, but most of them will be done.
Good, so we'll make our October for the majority of the work, and then there might be some stragglers?
That's my expectation right now, yes.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, good question. All right, item number eight.
An ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending section 070-110 of the Town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code pertaining to election signage, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Mayor, this comes to you after discussion, sponsored by Councilmember Kaczynski.
Excellent.
Turn over to him if he wants.
Would you like to make a motion on that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Awesome, great, thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you add, there was some onerous procedures in our existing election code that were clearly in violation of the United States Constitution. This cleans up a lot of that, and my, my thing is, this, I propose as a temporary Band-Aid, I would like to explore this a little further before the next elections come up, because Russell had indicated to me that DAVI actually requires posting of a bond for election signs by each candidate. So that's something that maybe we can discuss later down the road, because, just the fact that if the town has to go out and pick up the signs, that's costs that are incurred by the town, and it would encourage the candidate to pick up their signs. So, it's something later down the road, this is just something to get through. I could read your face.
(laughing) Sorry, sorry, didn't mean to be that transparent.
You're not a good poker player, are you?
Didn't mean to be that transparent, sorry, David.
(inaudible).
But I do, do sincerely appreciate the work that you've put in on this ordinance, I think what we've, you know, crafted here is going to be really helpful, and appreciate that.
Mayor, can I get a quick clarification, if I could, from council or someone? Section F there, F, and then 1, and then E, after qualification of a candidate, the election signs shall be remitted. We qualify in June, does that mean that the signs can go up after that, or, so can I get clarification on what that, after the qualification of a candidate, the election signs can go up? When does that happen? That would be on the back page of, that'd be on 4 of 150?
This is only the case of a special election, not a general election, Jim.
Okay.
So that's different, right? A special election can happen anytime, due to somebody being removed, somebody going out for health, or whatever, whatever the reason they stepped down. We'd have a special election, so, because we want rapid results on that, as soon as they're qualified, then they can start putting signs up, as opposed to general election, which would be, say, the day after the primaries.
Right, so, we have, we have it now that you can start the 1st of September. So after primary, that could be as early as August for us?
27th this year, right? Or 24th, I forget when they were.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So we change it from the 1st of September to, just after the, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Keith, that was kind of a question, is it, is it the primary day, or is it the day after?
It says after.
Okay, so day after.
Yeah.
Okay.
I do have one item on this, that we've talked really briefly about, that was not included on this. I'll throw it out there, it's not, you know, I think it's an improvement, but I certainly am not going to hold anything up on this. But one of the things that I've seen done in the past is that when a house is up for sale, and the resident is no longer at that location, big signs can go up on that property.
I think that's covered.
Is it? I didn't see it.
It can't be vacant.
Gee. Well, that's not really vacant, it's still owner, it's still owned by somebody, it's not vacant property.
Does anybody live there, though? The way you just expressed that, I thought they'd moved out. I mean, if they've got better language.
Yeah, I mean, you could just add in there, "or property for sale," right after it.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd be more than happy with that.
Is that all right?
I would be more than happy with that.
Unoccupied property?
Well, vacant is sort of unoccupied, so it's...
Kind of ambiguous, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, okay, I would like to be, to be a little bit more specific, I guess, because, because I think it was easier, if somebody owns the property, a lot of times they don't think of that as vacant.
Correct.
You know, vacant is almost like an abandoned piece of property.
This, Mayor, how I'd reword it with the blessing of council, would be election signs placed on vacant property, unoccupied property, or property for sale shall require written authorization.
Awesome, that sounds great, is that our, is that okay?
But it becomes ambiguous to me, because if the house next door to me, they're still living there, you can't put up a sign.
You can't put up a sign unless they consent.
They consent.
Oh, of course.
Yeah.
Okay.
You just need their signature.
Oh, so we're rid of that.
Well.
For the most part.
For the most part.
I'd like to amend my motion to add that language.
Mayor, I still have one more question. I mentioned E, but I probably should have said F1. It, that, it, I'm still reading, "after the qualification of a candidate." I don't see anywhere there that it says "for early elections," that's down in E, down below. So, again, I'm asking, after the qualifications in June, can you start putting your signs up, if that's what that's reading?
No, what that meant is that a candidate, once they qualify, can have one sign up on every street frontage, but they still have to comply with the rest of the ordinance, which is the timeframe for when they install it. So that was just saying, who is allowed to put up a sign, that's later modified by when that person can put up the sign.
Okay. Okay, that's, okay, right, that's legalese, okay, I got you.
It is a little bit.
Okay, because I'm reading it just to simply say that a candidate can do it after June, when he files, and, and I'm not sure that's what we wanted.
Okay, to resolve your, your issue with your consent, I would say, after the qualify, qualification of a candidate, as set forth fully below, or something like that, as set forth in more detail below, that's how I would say it.
I'd amend my motion to include that language as well.
Sorry, David.
That's okay, that's fine. No, no, no harm taken.
Certification is more important, so much for the early night. Pick me up once over.
Okay, that should tie those two together.
Yeah.
Which is what you all want.
All right. Are we, are we good with the wording now?
Yes, sir.
All right, okay. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Al Britton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item number nine, please.
Item nine is an ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending section 110-110 adequacy of parks and recreation facilities of the Town's Unified Land Development Code to amend the park impact fee schedule, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. If there's a motion, a second, I'll explain what this is.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Sure, Mayor, I'll be quick, and Andy may want to talk about it, but Russell only called me about it 15 times, because this is like his most important item.
Yeah.
And that is, the town has virtually no impact fees that it charges developers when they're building new homes in Southwest Ranches. And as a result of that, we looked back at the one impact fee we have, which parks, and realized it was the same impact fee that's been in effect since 2000. And it's nowhere near what any of the other municipalities charge new developers, or, you know, county or otherwise. So Russell has recommended we increase it to $1,000 per home to help pay for some of the park improvements. Andy, you may want to add on to it, but I just wanted to try to give, what do you want to justice?
No, you did well, and Russell has put some time into it, and it's appreciated. The one thing I would just want to make clear, I know the council knows, but to the public, I want to be clear, this only applies to new, single-family home construction. If you're doing an addition on your home, if you're doing renovations, this, this does not apply. It's only new, single-family homes that it would apply to. Thank you.
David.
Andy, I have a question. Can you give me a scenario how this would apply? We get a land buyer boom?
Sure.
At what stage does this?
All right, somebody like Toll Brothers will use an example, they're going to come in, they're going to build 20 single-family homes. That would be 20 times the impact fee to the parks, payable to the town.
When would this apply as to, like, when they get their certificate of occupancy?
Building permit.
Building permit. It's, it's early on in the process.
All right.
I had a question for Keith. We keep using the word developer. If I bought a piece of property in town, or somebody buys a piece of property, they want to put, put a single-family home on, you know, 2.5 acres, are they going to have to pay impact fees?
Yes, they're the developer.
I paid them with accounting a lot more than $1,000.
Much more.
Yeah. 30 years ago.
All right, any public comment on this item?
Mary Ann Allen, Mustang Trail. Russell, what a great boon it is to our town, and it just shows you how much thought goes into providing for our parks and finding revenue, and it's a shame we didn't think of this years ago, because we could have really bumped up our park fees and the improvements we can make. My only question is, is $1,000 enough? Can we get more? Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mary Ann. Any other public comment?
You know, Mary Ann does have an issue. Is there a way we can assess this based upon square footage of a new, new property?
Don't even go there, don't even go there. Don't even go there.
Mayor, these aren't new fees, they just haven't been adjusted since 2005, correct? They're not new fees.
It's not new.
Right, I mean, they've been here.
The amount is.
Right, the amounts have, but, but, so, since 2005, they've been the same, so I think it is time to adjust.
Yeah, I think so, I think so.
Cost of living increases.
Yeah, and I think it says a lot for our administration, that they are thinking about, you know, what's best for our residents in the town, you know? It's not just a job, they're doing a great job, you know, they're, they're going beyond. All right, any other comments? Seeing none, if we can please call the roll.
Councilmember Al Britton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Item number 10, please.
Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, accepting and approving an agreement with Kay, Kayalis Corp., in the amount of $293,010 to complete the Green Meadows Drainage Improvements along Southwest 54th Place, right-of-way between Dykes Road and Southwest 162nd Avenue, approving a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2022, 2023 town budget, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any comment on this item?
Just a question for Jim.
Yes.
Lived through some challenges with the construction out there, are you comfortable with this?
Yes.
Good.
Yes, I have, if you know, I've been around, I spoke to a lot of the residents, one-on-one, and trying to explain to them exactly what this drainage will do. This drainage will also tie in, not just to the 164th, 166th canal, but this is going to tie in back towards the bigger areas, towards, you know, towards Dykes Road and the big canal and stuff back there. So, yeah, I think this is a great help.
Right, good. Andy?
Yeah, Mayor, the only thing I'll add to that, because that is a valid point, we've had some concerns in the Green Meadows area previously, I can tell you, this is a vendor that we have worked with before, they have proven to be one of the best and most responsive to our, our issues, our questions, our concerns, so I'm very comfortable bringing this forward to a neighborhood that might feel a little sensitive right now.
Great, good, good, thank you. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Al Britton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item number 11.
Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, establishing a policy and procedure for all future transportation, surface drainage, ongoing rehabilitation to store projects, to prescribe standards and criteria for eligible projects, and for the procedures to be used for public notice, authorizing the town administrator to implement the transportation service drainage, ongoing rehabilitation to store policy, and providing an effective date.
Great, thank you, Keith. So, we have a motion on this?
Motion approved.
Second.
Great. This is an important item, we always try and improve what we're doing, and, and our residents keep us accountable to make sure we do that, and, and this is definitely true in this case, so we appreciate the residents who are out there, and Noel, in this case, particularly, thank you for your work on this. Any council comment before I open it up to the public?
Yeah, so Noel drove me around town, Debbie drove me around town, I know they were collaborating on this in some way, but the purpose behind this is really to improve communications with the people in the neighborhood, so that they're aware, they are able to provide some input, and, you know, by the time the contractor pulls up, the, the issues that the residents have been concerned about would be resolved by the, the town engineer. Rod also provided a lot of input on this, so I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that, you know, there were certain things that we were asking for that he just couldn't sign up for, because they didn't make a lot of sense. So he broadened it, rather than try to be narrow on it, and, and, you know, to improve the process overall. So also, Noel, thanks for your help on this.
Great. Any public comment on this?
Noel Hollisworth, 199th Avenue. Not being quite all there, I didn't realize this was even coming up tonight, or I would have brought my notes. Looking at what was given to me this evening for the first time, some of it's very good. But one thing is, well, a couple of things. The first question is, where does the Drainage Board know this? It does not mention the Drainage Board having any input whatsoever. In fact, the word Drainage Board is nowhere to be found in this. It was one of the questions I had when the original document I saw said that the town engineer shall be the sole determiner in determination. And I just about went through the roof on that. But that's not in here now, that he's the sole determination. But it's now the town engineer and the design engineer of record. Still no Drainage Board input. So we might as well cancel the Drainage Board because it's not necessary anymore. And since this is infrastructure, we don't need an infrastructure board either, so that board we don't need at all. According to this, you've got the town engineer and the design engineer of record making all the decisions, period. Anyway. The other thing is that the town published way back in, I believe, February, March, a page showing the swales and the percentage slope. And this was after 199th, 202, 201 was done, where we had one foot deep, and we've had five people injured on there. So we asked that these things be codified. That was part of the reasons this was here. It's not codified in here. You don't have a 12% slope off the road. You don't have a 25 up slope. You don't have where you have to have a gentle curved area. It can be the deep V that is so prevalent by our engineering staff. And I don't know if any of you remember when, where it's being discussed in Drainage, and I was there making presentations, where it was said by our engineer, I'd like to continue, please, if I could, that we have to put that in there in order to get the grants, but we don't follow it. Well, I'd like for it to be followed, and it's not in here. You've got some of it in there, and it says that, which I don't understand in number 1A, the second line, prior to advertisement for bids and award? Well, it should be prior to the bids, not the award. What we're doing now is prior to the, after the award. But I think "and award" should be struck from 1A. The 20 days, yes, that should be the bare minimum. All concerns shall be reasonably considered by town staff and then thrown into the garbage can. The final Tisdore project shall be brought before the Town Council for approval. So much for the Drainage Board, guys. Town engineer shall evaluate the proposed Tisdore project for any and all concerns prior to approval by the Town Council. So much for the Drainage Board. We don't need it anymore. If the area being considered by Tisdore project has a properly functioned drainage plan as determined by the design engineer of record and the town engineer. So much for the Drainage Board. We don't need them anymore. All swales within a Tisdore project shall attempt to maintain the minimum slope reasonably necessary. Well, reasonably necessary on 199, 202, and 201 was about 45 degrees, right off the road. And that was determined by our town engineer. If that's what he considers reasonable, I want something in writing that says the 12 degrees that you published in the town newsletter off the road, and you're going to have 25 degrees up slope from this lowest part. As for all Tisdore applications, projects, the application of PRTF shall be the recognized standard. I don't mind that at all. And there you have what I can remember. And I think that this is a very defective document as it stands. Thank you.
Thanks, Noel. Yeah, Mary Ann?
Mary Ann Allen, Mustang Trail. I can tell you as an equestrian that has ridden all the swales through Southwest Ranches, you've ruined the swales for the equestrians. You can't ride a horse on a 25-degree slope or a 45. They're all going to go out into the roadways. And I'll tell you how insane that is to have that kind of a drop-off. A car just has its wheel go over there, and they're just going to tumble in. I don't know the reasoning for such severe Vs, because they vary from road to road, okay? And the cost of tearing up the ground, creating that slope, and I don't see the benefit of it truly because water is water. It's going to find its own level anyway. I've been through many floods here for 40 years through Southwest Ranches. But I think it's creating a safety hazard having these slopes, and I don't understand why there's a discrepancy from one street to the next. I do know when they were doing my street, they had people that couldn't speak English doing the work, and that was a problem, okay? And, you know, sometimes engineers can't see the forest for the trees, and this is why the residents speak out, because I know how it's impacting people that ride their bikes, people that walk their dogs. We don't want to be on the hot asphalt. It can burn your feet in the summer. It's over 120 degrees on the ground. So our swales, we used to be nice to walk the dog, ride the horses, but it's become an unfriendly environment with what the engineering has done, and I think the council should address it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Ann.
Debbie Green, 5201 Southwest 199th. Yeah, I just read this thing, but I think it's a great idea that you, you know, we learn from past projects and some of the concerns of the residents, because sometimes out in each of the specific areas are a little bit different than other areas. I, as far as what Noel is saying, as far, including some of these advisory boards, I do think it's a good idea as well as the residents. And just so y'all know, when Noel's talking about people that are being, that have gotten hurt, he's not exaggerating, because between the people I know and he know, it's probably more than five. But it's just, and it's just, it is unsafe, and maybe, you know, Mary Ann's the first one who I've heard who had the concern for the horses on the swales, but just you have kids learning, you know, skating or biking or anything like that. You go to veer off onto the grass because a car's coming too close. It, it's not safe. You get hurt. And just, as she was saying with the swales, when they were doing the FPL work, so they sort of closed one half of the road and then more of the road, and they told you just to go, just go around them through the swell? Well, I hit the bottom of my, whatever that detect, I don't know what that thing is on the front of the car?
Right.
That tells you, the, the thing that tells you you're getting too close to something, that thing that's underneath? You know, I don't have a truck. I have a car. Whatever it's called. So, but I hit the bottom of it. I knocked it off getting into the, to go around the FPL people because just getting into that swell and around, it's, it's just, we just need to pay more attention. I know that you all are aware of it, and you're looking to improve on that, so thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. I think that, you know, some, another, more good points, I definitely feel like we need to make sure that the Drainage and Infrastructure Board is part of the policy. I mean, that's, that's one of the great safeguards in the whole process is bringing it in front of that board, so. And I don't think it was left out intentionally. I think it, you know, just wasn't included for whatever.
Well, Mayor, should we, should we table it?
Yeah.
Based on sending it back to the board?
Yeah, I think that...
For their recommendation?
I think it's a good idea.
David's got it.
I had some grammatical changes. And this probably for the record, where we go, paragraph A says, "A town workshop shall be held by the towns, by town staff, town staff, addressing the proposed Tisdore projects' parameters, details, and timeline." Instead of a semicolon, put a colon, because those become two independent clauses. So then the "prior to advertisement for bids" therefore modifies the town workshop as opposed to being a separate, a separate thought. And then I think removing the "and award," that's, that shouldn't even be in there. And then right after "advertisement for" refers back to line one, "advertising for a request for bids." And then...
Yeah, just one second, Noel.
Yeah.
We'll definitely get back to it.
And then B, where it says "affected residents," is there any parameters we're using to define the affected residents? Do we go back to our usual notices that we send out for land development? Or is there any way we determine who those affected residents are? Paragraph C, "all concerns raised by residents," remove that paragraph as a result of the workshop, because you don't want it limited to that workshop. You want it to "all residents," "shall be reasonably considered by town staff." So that's kind of what, where I was just thinking about.
Mayor, I mentioned to the vice mayor, rather than tabling this, you actually should vote it down, because the reason why is if you're sending it back to the Drainage Board for their consideration, it's going to come back different. And when you table it, you'd be debating the same item.
Okay.
So instead, you know, all of council member Kaczynski's comments, Noel's comments, et cetera, can be incorporated in a new document in this one.
Right. Right, right, yeah, Noel. Yeah, please.
The one thing I forgot to tell you was during the, when I said the 12% down slope and the 25% up slope, that is the only part that the Drainage Board did pass and send to the council, and it's not part of this. So someone is denying you the right of hearing the Drainage Board's recommendation. So 12% was voted on and passed. 25% up slope was passed by the Drainage Board, and it's not in this. And that is very defective from the staff sending it not to the council.
Thank you, Noel.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Just, I lost track of who made the motion and who seconded it.
I made the mo, I made the motion that I want to retract.
I was just going to say, did you want to modify your motion to?
Yeah, I want to modify the motion to deny.
Okay.
Councilmember Albritton, you had the second, so do you concur with that?
Yes.
Does it make sense to vote it down or just to withdraw it?
Either way. Either way. I mean, for the record, you may want to deny it.
Okay.
Motion approved. We agreed on that. Now let's just vote against it.
Well, no, he's making a motion to deny, so we would be voting in the affirmative to deny it.
You're not, you're denying it with directions to send it back to the Drainage Board to come back for you for future consideration.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
So is that the motion you made?
Yeah. Oh, the third one.
Second. All right, we got a motion and a second.
Am I going to vote yes or no? Which way here? What are you saying?
We want, the way I'm going to vote is I'm going to vote yes, that we are denying this and sending it back.
Yes, we're denying. Thank you.
I understand. Sending it to the board to take another look. Okay, if you can, please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion denied.
Thank you. All right. Approval of minutes. We've got five sets of minutes here. Debbie, I'm glad you're here. She says we're good. Debbie says we're good. Anybody else have any additions or?
No, we'll make a motion to approve all five.
All right.
Second.